Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for attending the Envision Greater Fond du Lac City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Gary Sharp. I'm retired Circuit Court Judge from Fond du Lac, and I'll serve as the moderator for this evening's event. To my left is Tracy Qualman. She is an employee of Envision Fond du Lac. She is their Director of Marketing and Communications, and she's here because I can't do anything technical. Luckily, she's here, and she'll make sure that the microphones are actually working as they're supposed to. Before we begin, I'd like to welcome the candidates who are in attendance, and maybe if you would just raise your hand when you're called. Tom Schusler is here. Jane Putty-Rickio?
I'm here.
All right. Angela Laring?
I'm here.
And Antonio Godfrey?
I'm here.
All right, thank you. Brett Zimmerman is also looking to be re-elected to the Fond du Lac City Council. However, he's not able to be here this evening. In his absence, he's provided a statement that he's asked us to read, and I'll do that at this point. The statement says, "Good evening. I apologize, I'm unable to attend the forum in person, but I'm delighted to be home taking care of my wife and newborn. I am grateful for Envision's willingness to allow me the opportunity to submit this statement to be read on my behalf. I'd like to thank my opponents for their well-run campaigns, competition encourages open discussion, giving voters varied perspectives and ideas that will only benefit the city of Fond du Lac. Having called Fond du Lac home for the past 30 years, I've had the privilege of graduating from Fond du Lac High School and Marine Park Technical College. For the past 15 years, I've dedicated myself to proudly serving the Fond du Lac School District as the head custodian for Parkside Elementary School. I wholeheartedly believe in our city. During my first term in office, I prioritized safeguarding our public spaces and amplifying the voices of everyday citizens. Throughout this journey, I've had the privilege of meeting remarkable individuals who reinforce my commitment to this community. Far from being mundane, our city offers endless opportunities, and I'm honored to serve as its representative. If re-elected, my second term will be dedicated to leaving a meaningful legacy for future generations. I aim to focus on enhancing infrastructure throughout the city, including roads, sidewalks, flood mitigation measures, and bridges. Additionally, I will prioritize initiatives that ensure accessibility to diverse housing options, expand public Wi-Fi access, and make childcare a reality for all residents by working with state and federal representatives and local organizations like Envision." The city of Fond du Lac is fortunate to have an exceptional city staff led by our dedicated manager Joe Moore and his talented team. This collaborative structure of governance enables seven distinct individuals to work together on council to work toward the common good. While we may not always see eye to eye, our shared commitment to serving the citizens ensures that we ultimately make decisions that benefit our community. In closing, I urge everyone to participate in the upcoming election in April, as they hold significant impact for our committee's community's future. Your vote is crucial, and I hope to have earned your support. I'm committed to ongoing enhancements in our parks and infrastructure, prioritizing affordable housing for all, and addressing the childcare crisis in Wisconsin. Thank you for your time and considerations. Signed, Brett Zimmerman." The four candidates here, and Mr. Zimmerman are vying for four open city council seats. These five candidates will be on the election ballot on April 2nd. You can find more information on these candidates, as well as polling locations, absentee voting, and voter registration on the city of Fond du Lac's website, and I'm told that this video of this forum will be available for someone to look at at their leisure on the city of Fond du Lac's website. Before we begin, I'd like to mention a few things regarding tonight's event. Each candidate will be asked a series of questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer the question. Rebutts will be addressed if they arise. Candidates and those in attendance are asked to exhibit professionalism, to show respect for all candidates, the moderator, and the guests, to be mindful of the time allotted to each of you for responses, and to refrain from using any sort of technology or cell phones other than, obviously, the microphones. We will begin the forum with the same question to each of the candidates. Please introduce yourself and answer, "Why are you seeking a seat on the Fond du Lac City Council?" I was told to make this a one-minute per candidate, but because Mr. Zimmerman's statement was a little longer, we'll make it two minutes for each of the candidates. You can use, as you wish, to make your introduction and indicate why you are running. When I call your name, please provide your response, and I've been told to go alphabetically on this one. So, Antonio, if you would go first, please.
First and foremost, thank you, Envision, for hosting this forum and allowing the candidates to introduce themselves to people. Well, first and foremost, the reason, one of the reasons I am running for city council, the city is highly and very important to me. I am not a native of the Fond du Lac community, but I have called this community my home for the last 25-plus years. This is where I raised my family. This is where I met my amazing, beautiful wife. I am currently a Fond du Lac School Board member, which I am graciously thankful to the citizens of the community of Fond du Lac to allow me to sit in that seat. I serve on multiple nonprofit boards and organizations here in my community, and I am avid, avidly, in programs to support our youth in our community. I champion youth mentorship with our mentoring program that I'm a part of, and I would hope to have all of your votes on April 2nd.
Thank you very much. Next, Jane.
Yes. Jane Putty-Rickio. I'm basically a lifelong born and raised resident of Fond du Lac. I have lived a few other places over the last 50 years. I am running for another term because I learned so much during the first term. I've always been interested in city government, national government, politics, history, governance, and when I've now finally had the opportunity and the time to do this, it's, I felt this is my time to serve. And there are, you know, big highlighted areas of things that the city council works on and gets enmeshed in, but I'm equally concerned with wastewater management and how well we're doing according to the state's grading system and our flood mitigation. And we do have an excellent city manager and city staff, very little turnover, very professional. I want to thank you all, Envision, for providing this forum for us tonight, and Judge Sharp, you for moderating, and for the people that showed up and all the people listening online. I appreciate your support. I'm all about transparency, equity, and doing the right thing. The only people that I serve or answer to are all the, about 40,000 residents in the city. That's all. That's my mandate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I just noticed that I fail at alphabetizing, because Angela was next, but I looked at the wrong spot. So Angela, I apologize. If you would, please respond.
Hi, I'm Angela Leering, and I appreciate the opportunity to come here and be able to talk about why I'm running for city council. I currently am on our county board, serving District 25. I enjoy government. I really enjoy being on the county board, and I love public service. I am a licensed practicing counselor, working with at-risk youth from the city of Milwaukee, and because of that job, I feel like I have insight into some of the things going on in our community here in Fond du Lac. And I love our city. It's a great city to be living in. I feel like I'd like it to continue to be great and thrive, and we can make it even greater. And some of those things are improving our public safety by addressing mental health care in our community. I also feel like we have a housing crisis going on, and it's really important that we do something about that so that we can make sure that we provide opportunities for some of the people that are coming out of college or moving here who can't afford housing. And so, that's the other thing. I think that we need to create opportunities for our youth in our community so they want to stay here.
All right. Thank you very much. And then, finally, Thomas.
My name is Tom Schusler, and I'm running for reelection to the Fond du Lac City Council. Reason why I'm running, two things stand out. One is that I have an intense interest in the subject matter. I just have always enjoyed all things related to infrastructure, streets, roads, sewer, water, curb gutter, development of communities, providing places for people to live and businesses to work. I've been real involved in the Main Street program in the previous city that I lived in, and the four-point approach to Main Street development. It's just an interest in cities is something I enjoy very much and have enjoyed my two years on the city council for that reason. The second reason is I think I can be helpful just because of my experiences in life and in work. In my job for the last 30 years, I've worked with communities, doing municipal activities with clients and communities over that period of time, and also being a small business lawyer, dealing with startups of businesses and trying for businesses to find their place in communities is something that that background has helped me the last two years as a council member. And thirdly, I've met such terrific people. I heard that the city staff here was good, but I had no idea it was this good. And working the last two years with the staff here, I just, I hope I get another opportunity to do that, to improve on the things that we've started. It's a way for me to give back. I'm serving on the St. Agnes Community Council and have done all kinds of other community work. I'd like to, I grew up in Fond du Lac, and I'd like to leave the community when I end my life in a little bit better shape than it was when I came into the world, when I was born at St. Agnes Hospital, so.
Thank you. Well, let's begin by talking about business. The question is, what do you believe are the top two most pressing concerns to the business community in the city of Fond du Lac? How can you, as a city council member, work with Envision Greater Fond du Lac to address those concerns and strengthen the area's business environment? So, Angela.
I feel like the two most important things affecting business in our community, and that would likely be important to Envision, are housing and childcare. I feel like, first of all, childcare is important because we have a lot of mothers that could be working and are not working, and we need to have a plan for childcare to help support the childcare businesses in town. A lot of them are closing down. They can't find employees, and I feel like we need to help out the parents. The other thing is, housing is really important. I feel like we need to do something about housing. We need affordable housing, and I find that with housing, government is never going to solve the housing situation. I don't think that any government entity can solve it. This is a crisis across the United States, and I feel like government needs to step away and get rid of the red tape so that there aren't as many regulations for the developers, so that they're able to, the developers are there. They're willing to come and build the housing. And so, I feel like if we got rid of the red tape, that would be the most important thing, especially like when you look at zoning and things like that, as far as that goes. There's more money, it's cheaper for a developer to build new housing also than it is to redevelop.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jane? And if you want me to repeat the question, any of you, just let me know, and I will do so, but.
I got it.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
I agree with Angela on the two huge priorities, which are childcare and housing. I think that we are so lucky in Fond du Lac, and this isn't just words, because I've put my money where my mouth is, to have a partner like Envision for the city, or the county, or the two entities combined, to even begin to do a tiny piece of what Envision provides would be so costly. And I don't think is well-received or trusted as Envision is in our business community countywide. What I think of childcare, regarding childcare, it costs as much now in the state of Wisconsin, and Fond du Lac is in about the middle of the graph, to send two children to UW Madison as it is to pay childcare for them from zero to six years old. Childcare is abominable. I was so lucky back in the olden days when I had my kids, and I was able to take them to a friend's home. She watched kids. And I know those days are gone pretty much, but if we could somehow make that a more feasible path to get in-home care, and I don't, I don't know what the city ordinances are on that, or licenses, or what. I don't think there's any one answer. I have this grand vision when I go to sleep at night, that we take the almost soon-to-be-vacant UW Fond du Lac campus and turn that into things called something like Kids Campus, and have healthcare, childcare that provides kids from all over the city. It's too expensive for a business to do it on their own, but maybe if all the businesses and the city and the county and the tech school and everybody came together, maybe we could have a big Kids Campus out there. But I understand that's a pipe dream. Regarding housing, housing depends pretty much on zoning in a city, and I don't want to s-
Five seconds, sorry.
And so, we have to look at our zoning, and maybe if things are all just single-family zoning, maybe if there's room on a particular-sized property, we could put an ADU unit on there or something. So, there's ways to expand housing in the city.
All right, thank you. And then, Thomas.
Well, the two biggest issues for business are public safety and the labor force. The labor force are limited from a city standpoint of what we can do about that problem. People need to have more babies, and we need more people. And, but, public safety, I was walking in, I was in Walmart the other day, and I was just so grateful that we have a Walmart in Fond du Lac, because a lot of communities are losing their Walmarts and other stores like that that provide their basic things that they have to have because of crime. And we're fortunate here that we have, I think, the best police department and fire department in the state of Wisconsin. And with the public safety setup that we have with Chief Goldstein and his people, we have a high degree of public safety where businesses are able to do business, and we shouldn't just take that for granted. We have to continue to support the police department, like the city did with the referendum a couple of years ago to add the staff, and to maintain an attitude where a business can come here and not worry about being interfered with by crime, in terms of being able to do business. The second issue the city could be involved in is businesses, small businesses, need places to do business. How much time?
Thirty seconds.
So, one thing that would help, working with Envision, if we could identify the sites in town in a, maybe in a more user-friendly way, and the city and Envision to work together online in another print or communication ways to communicate. These are sites that are available, and maybe there's also some sites where the city could participate in helping. I think that would go a long way to make this an inviting place for people to do business.
All right. Thank you. And then, Antonio.
Not to beat the, not to beat the dead horse in the ground with the childcare problem and the affordable housing, but our city, our city staff, and to be one in particular, Diane Benson's office has, has gone out and done some amazing things and researched some different areas throughout our city to, to help attract for the affordable housing. It's, it's a lengthy process. Some of these, some of our buildings that have been sitting idle and vacant for a few years, and there's some stringent construction work that needs to be done to these buildings to get them up to a livable code. Childcare is, is going to be the forefront of, as most of the other candidates have stated. And I take a different stand, a different point on this because it affects our city, our county, our area, and our business communities. So I think if all of these entities come together to start looking at what we can do to first fix that childcare problem that's in our community, we have multiple, multiple facilities, just like Jane just said, the UW Fond du Lac campus would be an ideal, but it's going to take all of these, these entities that make up our community to start having these conversations and come up with a stringent plan to make this work. I manage two retail stores here in town, so, and they are small businesses, but small business retention in our community is running, is going away. We just lost a community staple with, from the Moses family. I mean, when I, when I think of Fond du Lac, okay, when I think of Fond du Lac, I think of the Moses family and the Miracle Mile. So we need to figure out and partner to figure out why our smaller businesses and our larger corporations are also leaving and not retaining. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next question relates to infrastructure and quality of life. And I think I'll give you guys, I should have done it this last time, but I'll indicate that the, we'll call on, to answer this question, Jane first, then Thomas, then Antonio, and then Angela. So, what do you see as the most pressing needs for the infrastructure or capital projects in the city? So, Jane.
Thank you. I think that our staff at our council in preparing the budget does a really good job on infrastructure in the past five years, probably. We're looking at our bridges all the time, replacing bridges where needed. What the tragedy that happened in Baltimore this morning was preventable. They're thinking now, there should have been fenders around the piles, the piers under that bridge, and there were none, which is incredible for these heavy cargo container ships going through there every day. We're really good on our wastewater treatment plant. People don't know about it because it's not glamorous, but we really do rate very highly on things like phosphorus management and all these chemicals and groundwater, things that the state rates us on and requires of a community. We, our, our staff, our crew out there is getting state awards all the time. And flood mitigation, we've done a lot for that, building new pump stations. Looking at now Highway 41, the new demolition and redirection of Highway 41 out by Hickory Road, that is going to impact the water flow out in that area, and that may, that may negatively impact how our city water is managed. So I'm sure our city staff is looking at what DOT is recommending for that area. We've done so much in our parks the past few years, in all parks, not just Lakeside Park, and will continue to do so, I'm sure. It's, it's a real commitment that the city council, the prior city council, and the city staff has made. And I have no complaints and no worries that this kind of attention will continue to be given. Infrastructure is everything, and I wish that the national government would follow the plans that are in place that would benefit us all.
Thank you. Thomas?
Three things. On the sanitary sewer project, I'm looking at page 12 of the Capital Improvements Plan. Our Capital Improvements Plan for 2025 has a biosolids dryer, $17,900,000, and also has a biogas utilization pipeline so that we use the gas that the sanitary sewer plant generates is an improvement at $11,200,000. So, we are meeting two pressing needs with a huge investment, and people should be aware, though, that that doesn't all go on our property tax bills. Those are financed with borrowing that is paid through user fees of our sewer and water bills. So, we're meeting pressing need to keep that plant as one of the best in the state by those two huge investments that will take place. I hope it all happens. It's in the Capital Improvements Plan, 2025. Second, on page 18 of the Capital Improvements Plan, you see $3 million for the sewer being extended east of town into the township, south of Highway 151, for the sewer to be extended, and $1,200,000 for the water to be extended out there into the township based on agreements that took place long ago. It's called the city's growth area, and that's very exciting because that creates the potential for single-family housing residential development to take place. The city had to get involved in that. There's no way that developers could make that kind of thing happen. And so, those, to me, oh, the third thing is the street projects. I'm probably running out of time, but the street projects, my favorite subject, I got from Paul DeBries, our Public Works Director. The city is a sket- I what?
I have seconds.
We have a schedule for street projects, and we will keep up our streets. To me, I drive through a community, and that's what I go by. Are the streets being kept up, or is it all potholes? And Fond du Lac, we keep up our streets.
Thank you. And Antonio?
The continuous work- The continuous work that, like I just, I mentioned earlier, that Diane Benson's office and the city has done with, with that partnership with that 20, with, with the North Main corridor to continuously update and bring our city back to its vibrance. The flood mitigation problem that we, if we get a substantial snow, we, or a substantial amount of rain, we, our, our city instantly turns into a, to the Fond du Lac River of throughout the entire city. So that, I know that works is in the, in the plan. So I would love to see that continue and go throughout the city to figure out what other areas that we can update that infrastr, that sewer infrastructure to build that up. Historic preservation, that's the one thing that I love about this city. There's a lot of historical buildings here and a lot of historical landmarks. I would love to see a lot more of these, these historical things be protected and talked about a little bit more and, or our, the people in our city to visit those things and celebrate the, the historical facts of our, of our community.
Okay, thank you very much. And then finally Angela?
I feel like for our city, flood mitigation is important, especially here in the downtown with the river. I feel like if we took care of that and could figure that out, we could develop a little bit more down on North Main Street and, and maybe even develop right along the river. There's been ideas of a River Walk. That would be really nice. I also feel like as far as the capital improvements plan, that the sewer and water is being extended, that, that it's being extended is really important because again, I'll bring up the housing crisis. It would be good for developers to be able to build those single family homes. We're in need of those homes and I feel like the city investing in that is really huge. It's important. We had a plan like that, that was brought to the county. Envision was part of that and it was so that we could provide 20% I believe of the funds for sewer and water to go into Campbell Sport so that there could be housing developed there. The developers were going to pitch in, I believe the city of Campbell Sport and Fond du Lac County. And we would have got single family homes, multifamily units, and one other, but that did not go through and, which was a disappointment, but it was exclusively for the Campbell Sport area. But they're the only ones that came to us to try to solve this problem of housing. So I feel like extending the sewer and water is a really, a really big thing.
Thank you very much. Next question. Housing has been a topic of conversation throughout Wisconsin and the country. We know we have a shortage of housing at all levels. Do you think the city's current housing policies adequately address the diverse needs of our community? And what will you do to promote equitable access to safe and affordable housing? And this question goes first to Thomas, then Antonio, then Angela, and then Jane. So, Thomas?
The most important thing for the city to do to make more housing available is to have more TIF districts. Right now, I looked at all the TIF districts in the state, on the state's website, and the law allows up to 12% of assessed value to go in, to be used for TIF districts, and Fond du Lac is only at 3%. Because with a TIF district, the city can participate, take a, a piece of land, it doesn't have to be in a perfect place, but in fact, we're doing it on Doty Street near the Fives factory. And so I'm, I'm glad to see that happening and can get involved with a developer to make a, a project happen. The TIF district we just closed out and started out with $15 million of investment. Now it's worth 126 million. So it also helps to grow our city. We need more assessed, assessed value, more tax revenue to keep, to pay for all this. But it's TIF districts that can make more housing happen. There's a development, I talked to somebody in Oconom Walk. I think a great place would be at North Main Street and Scott Street where we have that land. If we, I know there's two businesses there that have to work with that issue, but in Oconom Walk, they had a multifamily, and it doesn't have to all be what the federal government calls affordable housing either. It can be market housing. They have a project that's happening there that has multifamily housing, but then in the back, which in our case will be close to the park, they have some townhouses. I think that'd be a terrific place for the next TIF district. And so my answer for the problem of housing and also revenue generation for the city would be to do more of what we're doing in terms of TIF districts.
Thank you. Antonio?
Equitable and affordable housing is always gonna be a forefront of, of multiple cities. And we, just like Tom just stated about the TIF districts, I mean, our city has been used, I mean, used our TIF districts to create apartments, affordable housing for our, our, our city members, but to for people to understand what a TIF district is, because unfortunately, I didn't understand what it was until I, I reached out to city staff about it. And it was, I, I learned more than I, than I wanted, I mean, than I needed to know. But it, it is very unique, that's a neat system that multiple cities have. And I think if the, the education piece of that, if more members of our community would understand about how those TIF districts are created and the monies that's generated will go back into our communities to, to help with affordable housings.
Thank you. Angela?
Yes, I feel like we need to obviously have a mix of affordable housing and market rate housing. But I, again, will bring up the fact that it's important for us as a city to invest in infrastructure such as sewer and water so that we can make available the dream of having a home to everyone real. It is so expensive to buy a home right now, a single family home. I believe it's like $250 for a square foot for a house. So you're not, you're looking at over $300,000 for a home. I don't see that price going back. Supply and demand is really high right now and we don't have enough supply for the housing market. And I feel if somehow we can provide maybe sewer and water to areas where they can build single family homes, that would be really great. I feel also like we can invest in multifamily units and also senior housing if there is a way to bring that cost down for the developers and everyone involved. There are, I have clients right now that are looking to have a home and they can afford a home, but through WEDA and other things that you can get, programs through the state, you can, you can get loans for homes. And with, with us helping in the development of that, I feel like that's one way to go for people to share in the dream of having a home in our community.
Thank you. And then finally Jane?
Yes, thank you Judge. I totally agree with Mr. Schusler on the TIF. The city has a really good record with TIF districts and please people check them out. I do want to say in this regard that our city also has an excellent bond ranking, bond ranking. When Mr. Schusler was talking about the millions of dollars that are be putting in for wastewater and flood mitigation and that those aren't coming out of tax increases for property taxes, they're coming as we pay loans back. And the reason we get really good deals on loans, you know, that's, that's a really elementary term to use, but we do very well borrowing with our municipal, on municipal loans because of our excellent bond rating that we have as a city. Many cities don't have this kind of bond rating and to achieve something like that is not an accident. It's achieved by our city staff and city manager and all the people in our city departments. We only have about 300 people employed in the city and that's not very many to make it run as well as it runs. So I want to expand TIFs. I also would like to look at zoning. I think we need to look, not, you know, we need to look at zoning. When I mention ADUs, those are additional dwelling units, like in people's backyards. I don't know what our zonings are, but many communities across the country are lessening their restrictions on a large sized lot just having one, one large size, single family home. That you can build an ADU out in the backyard for your mother and father-in-law or your college kids, or the parents will maybe move out of the big house into the small house. All those things come from zoning. And I think we're gonna have to start to look at zoning. We need housing at all levels, market rate housing. And the last thing is, and I think the county does this still, but don't hold me to it, they offer $15,000 cash for people moving into the city to work in order to buy a home. And, and Angela's agreeing that that still exists. Many people can afford big rents. They're paying huge rents, but they can't get enough together to get the down payment. So we need to do something to help people with down payments. They could afford the monthly costs, but it's tough to get a down payment in hand.
Thank you. All right, the next question. In what ways do you, and this, this question is to be answered first by Antonio, then Angela, then Jane, and then Thomas. So in what ways do you see public-private partnerships contributing to economic development in Fond du Lac, including transportation, utilities, and technology? And how would you facilitate collaborations to ensure prosperity for all entities? And I think they are meaning collaborations in public-private kind of partnerships to put together things that enhance economic development in Fond du Lac. So Antonio, any thoughts?
Well, there's already, there's always been a, a public-private partnership with cities and business entities throughout, throughout our, our cities. And sometimes they are very well received and sometimes they're not very well received by, by our, by our community members. So I think we, we need to lay that out in the, in the terms of that contract and work together to, to, to make sure that all parties that are invested into this, the city and private entities, that we, we know the services and things that we are getting upfront. That way there is no hidden surprises.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Angela, your thoughts?
Not to harp on the housing, but I feel like you can work with the city and with your county and with developers, for example, on housing issues to build the infrastructure and then for developers to come in and, and build units and for the city and for the county to provide funds for those sorts of things. And then also for the city to reduce their, to, to just make it, to cut the red tape basically. I feel like that's, that's one example of how you could do that. I feel that's really important. I also feel like we can do that with childcare where the different companies can come together and also with the private childcare in, in the city. I don't, I don't agree with put, partnering, partnering with the county on this issue. I feel like not necessarily using county property, but I feel like maybe getting some help, you know, financially from the county. I think in that situation, we should partner with private childcare centers and listen to what they have to say. So it's really important for the city, the county, and for private businesses to work together because I, to solve, for example, that, to come up with a solution for that problem, I feel like we already have the solution that we need if we listened to the private businesses. And yeah, I feel like those are two good examples of how we can work together.
Thank you. Jane?
Yes, thank you. This city wouldn't be anything near to what it is if we didn't always have a good relationship and partnerships with small and large businesses. We have incredible generous businesses in this community and have had for generations. Those businesses have been blessed to have this very hardworking labor force available to them. So it's been a win-win for both. So we have to. And there are many businesses, like Envision has 600 members and there are many more other businesses in the city. We should look at all partnerships with the county, with the state, with, when we talk about daycare agencies that, that exist right now, they have to be at the table when we talk about what could we do to expand childcare and pay those people. Childcare workers are lower paid than everybody except hosts and hostesses in restaurants. Childcare workers are below them. And, and they're like at the lowest end of the spectrum. We need partnerships. We need to work more with Envision. We need to support them monetarily because like I said at the beginning, we can't replace what they do. And so I'm all for partnerships. There's often controversy over what projects people should support, but at the end of the day, you let the people and the community decide that. But we're blessed with our community partners and have been for generations.
Great, thank you. And then finally, Thomas, your thoughts?
TIF districts are public-private partnerships because they include development agreements with developers. Downtown Fond du Lac Partnership is a public-private partnership. The Main Street program, it's the businesses getting together and they run that program, basically run it, and the city supports that. So those are two public-private partnership categories that we're involved in. But what I'd like to see that we really, I don't think we have that we should have, is I'd like to see the city and Envision work together to improve the city and perhaps Envision's, but I'm mainly concerned about the city's website. I'd like to see our website become a marketing website. I'm looking at a website from another community. And if you turn to their main page right away, they'll, they say financial assistance. And it doesn't necessarily mean the city's gonna give out money, but it explains to them all the different forms of help that might be out there. And right on the front page, it talks about art, music, and attractions, recreation, outdoor lifestyle, business growth, and employment. Boom on the, not just the next city meeting is, and this is your city government, but it's a marketing webpage. And I really believe that Envision probably has more expertise that could help the city to improve our webpage to make that happen. This city that I'm looking at talks about, it's got a whole section on financial assistance for business and property owners. And you can look there to see all the different places that people could go. The state just passed legislation last summer, a whole bunch of legislation to support housing for public infrastructure, buildings on commercial space, converting vacant buildings into housing, home repair and rehab loans. This should all be on our website so people know where they, where they can go to get help. We need to switch our website to be a marketing website. And I think Envision, that, a partnership with Envision could help us with that.
Thank you. All right, the next question, and this will be answered first by Jane, then Thomas, Antonio, and then Angela. In order to properly function, city councils must reach consensus to make decisions. How will you voice your individual opinion yet work to find consensus among the council? Oh, Jane?
I can't, can't say that I ever struggled to express my opinion. So I don't have any problem doing that. I'll fight for that. I have researched. I think about things. I'm not a rubber stamp voter on the council. But once the decision is made, once the vote is taken, then I'm a team player and willing to go forward, wanting to go forward. When we talk about partnering with, say, the state or understanding our legislators, when we're talking about childcare, the, our existing legislator majority, legislative majority is not looking to expand childcare credits that we've gotten ever since COVID. And initially, I understand that because we don't have COVID funding anymore, but we need to pay attention to what our legislature is doing and how it affects our city. There's never going to be 100% consensus. For every good idea I have, six other people have an excellent, equally good idea. But once the decision is made, you just work with the team and push forward and get it done.
Thank you. Thomas, your thoughts?
Well, to a certain extent, I don't like consensus. I think consensus is dangerous. I think consensus is dangerous. You can get a thing which is called in psychology groupthink. And then you can get a group of people in a small group, like seven people on a city council. If they're not, I'm glad that, for Jane, that she has kept us on our toes that way. I don't want us always to be agreeing. I want us to be disagreeing. And I don't, and if somebody raises their voice, that doesn't bother me. On the other hand, there's a thing called civility and professionalism. And that's just something that we should have learned growing up, to be ladies and gentlemen, or you, I guess you can't say that anymore. But, and, and to, and to be respectful and courteous. Just basic courtesy will take care of problems coming to consensus. But otherwise, vigorous debate to me is more important than consensus.
All right, thank you. And Antonio, your thoughts?
I work with multiple different, different boards and organizations. And, and as a school board member, I've, I'm never, we, the consensus is, is just like Tom said, kind of deadly. But we work together for the better good of our constituents, which will be our, in this, in this case, our city. Because our city has entrusted all of, entrusted all of us with having those debates and those, those conversations prior to our meetings and answering all the questions that we have about what we are, we are voting on. And so I think that working together as elected, duly-elected adults for the common good of our community. But we can also have those disagreements. But at the end of the day, we come together for the better part of our community.
Thank you. And finally Angela.
I feel like our city council and also our county board pretty much almost always looks like they agree on everything by saying yes. And that's because a lot of the work occurs in committees. And committee, when you have, when you're in a committee and you have an agenda item, I feel like it's your responsibility as a committee member to research that item and to talk to people involved with that particular item. And then to discuss it in committee or, you know, and then you would vote on it and it comes to the council, right? Normally, in the council, like I said, most people agree. But you could ask for a committee as a whole. I feel like the council could ask for more committees as a, of a whole so that they can look at the item, have discussion of the item. And so it looks like government is being more transparent. I feel that's really important.
Thank you. All right, the final question. And this will be first to Antonio, then Angela, then Jane, and finally Thomas. We are going to discuss the structural form of the city's municipal government. Wisconsin allows for two models. One, the administrator option, which includes the position of mayor. And two, the city council, or the city council manager option, which is the current model for Fond du Lac. Do you believe the current form of Fond du Lac's government is the most conducive model for the city's success? And then why or why not? So, that's the question. Antonio, your thoughts?
Well, our, our city manager is, is, it's worked for multiple years. And I know this has been a hot, big topic for, for quite some time with, with multiple people to want to see the city of Fond du Lac have a mayor. But I don't, and because smaller cities around us have a mayor and that are, that they're, they're cities. It works for them. But I think that would be a decision that's left up to our voters. I mean, and that, that decision shouldn't solely lie in the hands of the, the council that sits around the table. I think we need to, need to put that decision to our, our community as a whole. And I would not be opposed to that. But I think that would be a decision that needs to be made by our community as a whole.
Thank you. Angela, your thoughts?
I feel like our current form of government in the city of Fond du Lac, it works. But I feel like the public sometimes doesn't feel it's as transparent and it can look authoritarian. I feel like if there was a mayor, a mayor is someone that is elected versus a city manager who is selected by the city council. I feel that it's important. I like the mayor-council form of government, strong council, not, not weak council. I feel like it's more of a partnership. And I feel like that's really important for, for the public and for transparency. Sometimes when you're not an elected official, you are not held accountable for things in the same way. So there's more accountability with that. And, but also there are advantages to the form of government we have because the person that's normally selected as the city manager tends to be an experienced person who knows how to perform their job duties. So I guess it's, it's, you know, I do, like I said, both forms work. But I feel like a lot of cities, especially cities, most cities across the United States, I would say, a lot of them have a mayor-council form of government.
Thank you very much. Jane, your thoughts?
Yes, I'm just going to throw in for 30 seconds that I meant to say it when we were talking about like my kid's campus idea or all these groups working together to provide childcare. Chaillotan and Carcana have both done so. Those cities are both in the process and some have already had success in this, working together across the entities to create childcare options in those two cities. So look those up, Chaillotan and Carcana. I am certainly opposed to a mayor form of government in our city. I've known Joe Moore, never socially, never socially, not at any event or anything, just across, you know, that part of the building and sitting up there for like eight years now. And I have no idea if he leans Democratic, Republican, or independent. And that's how it should be. A mayor all position is definitely partisan. We don't need the city council and the leader of the city to be partisan positions. That's too much cronyism, especially Fond du Lac's not big enough to have a mayor, I believe. Because there would be too much cronyism for a city this size. I think it speaks well that I have no idea what Joe Moore is politically. Politics don't have a place in, in this environment that we do our city council work in and the management of it. It's, you know, he's not handing out jobs to people, he's not calling in favors. It's strictly managerial and administrative. And the city council is responsible for hiring him, firing him, grading him. And we are all elected by the people. So that's plenty representation, representation. We're too small and it's too dangerous, it would be too much cronyism.
All right, thank you. And then finally, Tom, Thomas?
Appreciate it. Envision published this Milken Institute, rated the city of Fond du Lac 25th out of 203 cities for best performing cities. And we went up 30, we went 31 places from 56 to 25th. And that's a measure of how effective cities are in promoting economic growth and attracting residents. We're going in the right direction. And one reason why we're going in the right direction is our form of governments, which we have with the city manager form of governments. We have a $38 million general fund budget. It is way too complicated. Someone gets elected as mayor and they think they can run a city? I, that just baffles my mind that, because the statute says the mayor is the chief executive officer of the city. And we have seven elected council persons that can, that provide oversight from the representative standpoint of the people. And that covers that democracy issue. And I'm just so glad that we have the city manager form of government. And I think the proof is, is that our city is, is going in the right direction with that form of governance.
All right, thank you very much. Well, those are all the questions that I had. This concludes the City Council Candidate Forum hosted by Envision Greater Fond du Lac. Thank you all for taking the time to provide your responses to the questions that we have asked and those questions facing the community. Personally, I'd like to thank all four of you and Brett for your willingness to put yourselves out there, become candidates, to serve and to choose to serve your community. It's the highest form of activity, I think. But it takes an awful lot. And thank you all. I would say to our audience, please be sure to vote on April 2nd. You can find more information on the candidates themselves, the polling information on the city, for the city, and all of that's on the city of Fond du Lac's website. So with that being said, thank you all again. Have a pleasant evening. Tracy, anything you want to say? All right, thank you. How about that? You want this? Some of my scribblings. Oh, and I'll leave this with you. So do I get to steal this pen? All right. No, no, one is good. But I, I've been using my wife's Addish and Jones pens all the time. And she threatened me that she was going to cut me off. You're very welcome. Good to see you.
You as well.